Okay. We will get started. I will call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order this Tuesday, October 7th, at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, hometown Ace Hardware in Milton Piggly Wiggly.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number four, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We've got a couple folks signed in. Anybody that wants to speak during this open forum, please approach the podium. Name, address, and if we can keep it under three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Tatum Wilson. I live at 1011 Park Place over by the golf course. And I'm here today to kind of just listen and take some notes with my classmates here. So we are part of the Rock County Civics Academy practicum mentorship kind of that's going on. And we are overseeing like local government and kind of immersing young, you know, students like my classmates and I to kind of get an understanding of what happens in local government and shadowing, you know, positions. So I had the pleasure of meeting Paul and Eric and Brandon the other day. And just so you kind of guys know who, who we are and what we're going to be doing, we'll be kind of out at more of these events, more of these meetings and everything to kind of get a feel of, you know, local government and what's happening in the city. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey guys, I'm Poppy Ramos. I know most of you on the board. I'm also with Tate and Lily doing the cervix practicum thing. And yeah, just here overseeing leadership in our local government and taking note of how different boards work and different things work because I do work at the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. So I kind of see that aspect. So taking note of what a government board like this looks like. And yeah, I will just be around, so.
Thank you. All right, number five, approval of consent agenda. Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding the nonprofit contribution policy update.
At the direction of the common council, the nonprofit contribution policy has been updated. During the 2026 budget workshop held on September 8th, common council directed staff to include the gathering place and the Milton Historic Society as an automatic annual contribution. Under this update, both organizations will receive $10,000 each year from the City of Milton without the need to apply under the nonprofit contribution process. The following note has been added to page two of the nonprofit contribution policy. Each year, the Milton Historical Society and Gathering Place will automatically be included in the annual contribution allocation. These organizations are recognized as ongoing community partners and will each receive $10,000 contribution without the need to apply. For the fiscal impact, the City of Milton's general fund will provide $20,000 annually. And staff does not have a recommendation regarding the update to the non-profit contribution policy.
So we still looking for maybe some discussion and a motion to actually make this update, Paul is in?
Whatever the councils chooses to do.
I have some comments or questions about this. The first question is, is the ad hoc committee still going to meet to discuss the other components of the nonprofit policy? Is this just one component and we are not done with this? Or is this going to finalize?
The ad hoc committee was for the special event permit and not for the nonprofit contribution.
You're right, sorry. The other thing I have is the Milton Historical Society has requested $20,000 in their annual request, whereas we would only be giving them $10,000 under this change. So my question is to fellow alders, would be, we allow them to still further request money? Or are we going to cap it at the $10,000 that we would be putting in the policy?
I also had a question on that since it looked like the applications were done together. Is that $20,000 combined or is that $20,000 for each of the historical society and the house?
The Milton House operates under the Milton Historic Society and that's where that request was. It was a request for $20,000. That was before this policy change was related to them. And in fact, it has not changed yet until it's voted on this evening.
Okay, so that it's a total of $20,000 for the two of them is what they requested?
By the two of them, you are speaking of the Milton Historical Society and the Gathering Place?
Yes.
They have requested for $30,000. The Milton Historical Society requested 20 and then the Gathering Place requested 10.
Okay. Context, for at least the last decade, we've given 10 to both. And if we, if Milton House, and actually both entities at some point in time or other have asked for additional funds and we haven't necessarily given it to them at this period in time, but we've given it at when we have surplus funds disbursement time period. That's when they've sometimes have gotten additional funds.
So what would this look like if the applications, if we implement this as a line item on the budget that goes through every single year? Would they then, because they're requesting $20,000, would this application be then for just an additional 10? Does that make sense?
For this year, since we've kind of caught this in the middle, I would think that we are giving 10 and they've asked for 20. If we want to do the additional 10, that would fulfill the request. In the future, who knows what the request may be?
And I'll say they've requested $20,000 for probably the last five years or so, so.
But just to confirm, they wouldn't, if we approve this tonight, they would not come forward at the next meeting, either one?
I would expect Gathering Place to not come forward and I would expect the Historic Society to come forward. That's all right.
You'd expect them to come forward because they'd be requesting additional $10,000 over the base, yep.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the nonprofit contribution policy update to include $10,000 to the Milton Historical Society and $10,000 to the Gathering Place each year and not need to reapply.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to consider adding a note to the policy that they can apply for additional funds just to make it clear for future.
I think it's a good idea, good addition. Also, I assume, Paul, you talked to the Milton Historical Society about how this worked out?
I believe Kelsey has.
Okay, all right.
So do we need to decline this motion?
I would propose that councilwoman Walker is in favor to amend her motion.
I will amend my motion to include that we place a note that the Gathering Place and the Historical Society are eligible to apply for more funds as needed.
Second.
Okay, we have a modified motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number seven, review of nonprofit 2026 budget requests.
I imagine under the policy eligibility, A2 must primarily serve City of Milton community members. I do not know how many they present every year. If they do two and, or if they do three and the two of them are here, then I would say they primarily do. If they do 100 and two are here, I would say no. But that is my interpretation of the eligibility.
So other than discussion during this section, do we, are we looking for, if we want to move all these on to the interview process or let them demonstrate next, do we have to make a motion to do that?
No, you do not. They've already been invited to present at the next, per the policy to present at the next.
So just for discussion then?
Yep.
Perfect.
If anybody has any other points to discuss on any of these requests. Okay, if there's none, then we will move on. Number eight, presentation, discussion, and direction regarding the 2026 annual budget presentation.
For the 2026 draft budget, Milton's growth in over 24 to 25, the equalized value moved from That's a growth of an equalized value within the city of 106,492,200, a 14.93% increase. Budget constraints, expenditure restraint, that's a state incentivizes us to financially comply. Expenditure restraint is a state imposed cap on how much a municipality can spend. Levy limits, we must comply with these. Levy limits are a state imposed cap on how much a municipality can tax. Next, new construction is the only mechanism that allows a municipality to increase its levy from the previous year. In 2025, our net new construction was 4.996. For reference, last year in 2024 is 4.21. That equates to an allowable increase of $153,026. Excuse me, $153,026. I can't speak, $153,126. My apologies. State aid, City Milton receives various state aid allocations from the state of Wisconsin. Shared revenue, highway road aid, personal property aid, and supplemental municipality aid. Static factors, things we hear are health insurance. Health insurance premiums, premium analysis was received. The city has seen an increase in health insurance premiums by 3%. This represents an increase in budget expenditures by 12,220. Wage, the police union contract is currently in negotiations for 2026. This draft budget does include a 3% COLA wage, cost of living, wage increase across the board for all employees. And debt service, the city's 2026 debt repayment schedule increased by $42,747. So what does this all mean? Our allowable increase in our tax levy is $153,126. Health insurance increases takes away 12,220 of that. Assessor transition with reevaluation takes away 17,800 of that. The wage, 3% proposed wage increase, 71,680. We did see a transportation aid increase of $9,864. Shared revenue and expenditure restraint programs, we've seen an increase this year of $17,275. But our debt service did increase by $42,747, having a net surplus there of $35,818. So the city's 2026 draft budget will levy $3,897,592. As presented today, the draft budget does qualify for the state imposed levy limit cap and does qualify for the estimated expenditure restraint program. No reduction is required to meet levy limits before the budget can be adopted. No reductions are required to meet the expenditure restraint before budget can be adopted. Major changes for 2026, as I'd mentioned, the health insurance increase, the wage increase, the assessor transition with reevaluation, debt service increase. The fire department allocation, we received their proposed budget on last Thursday. It's going to be an increase of $23,461. That will be under consideration by the fire commission on Thursday. Capital increases, again with our $46,858. We were able to get in the Ice Age Wayfinding signs and flower baskets for downtowns at a price of $7,000. Park improvement benches and park bike racks with repair stations, we're looking at $13,000. State aid increases with our revenues, is a revenue and that's $27,138. Capital items in the budget, SRO vehicle outfit for the police, school resource officer, $20,000. We have started rolling stock for accident body cameras. This is going to be continual request every year to update those for our officers, $12,000. Council chamber updates to start streaming live again and have better audio that doesn't fail us during the meetings. $37,368. Vehicles, again, rolling stock. We budgeted for one and a half squad cars every year, $81,000. We were able to get the splash pad fence that was requested by council in for $17,000. Then street projects next year, we're looking at Badger Lane, Pheasant Ridge, and seal coating throughout, in areas throughout the city. A total proposed 2026 budget allocation for capital items, $389,868. Here are some of the capital items that are not in the draft budget. Community house renovation, $400,000. The Parks Committee has conducted a study, is contracted for a study to give some options. We'd probably be looking at doing, possibly working on that in the 2027 program. Library HVAC, we're awaiting a study back from our engineers on the price on that, so that's unknown at this point. Fully inclusive playground that the council had spoken about. That is as much as you'd like to spend or as little as you'd like to spend. Vehicles, we are not budgeting for a plow truck this year, at quarter million dollars. Staff, we were unable to include our part-time parking wreck director, estimated $56,000. And the Iron Red Hawks and Veteran Poll signs were not included in this capital item budget. Again, with the Veteran Poll signs, I am going to recommend we start fundraising for those. I think that should be an easy one to fundraise for. Nonprofit requests, we did include Badger Court Hawks, we did include theirs. The Gathering Place is $10,000, Milton Historic Society $20,000, Milton Youth Tri $2,500. Open Doors Foundation yesterday withdrew their request for funding. So we're looking at a total this year of $37,500. That is up significantly from last year's $26,000 and $25,000 and $23,000 and $24,000. So our budget goals, balanced budget, we've achieved. Stay within levy limits. We do qualify for the expenditure restraint program and no reductions in service throughout the city. We are still working with a few unknowns. Our assessment ratio is unknown. This impacts the calculating of the tax rate. We typically learn this around late November. This does not affect levy that is passed by the council. There are a couple of things still hanging out there that might pop up in the next month and a half. It's still early, early in October, but we're in pretty good shape. I know Kelsey and I have been really happy with how this budget's been panning out. So some takeaways here, maintains the current level of service, compensates all employees with the same increase and no change for employees on the percentages paid for their insurance premiums. The budget does qualify for that state expenditure restraint program and the budget does qualify for the state imposed levy limits at this point. And just a reminder of our budget schedule, tonight we would approve moving ahead with the budget publication. Budget publication would be next week. Public hearing would be held at our first meeting in November and then we would approve the budget at our second meeting in November. So I will take any questions if anyone has any or it's?
I'll start with a comment and then I have a question after that.
Yes.
My first comment is it's nice to have so many unknowns known this early in the cycle because I know previous years, we're still dealing with a lot of unknowns by the time we publish the budget. So it's nice to have a lot of those figured out and looking pretty positive at the moment. Are we levying to the max is my question?
At this point, we expect to levy to the max.
Okay, I mean, that's typical, such as case.
Any other questions for Paul? He just knocked it out of the park, that's why.
I read what Kelsey wrote. I would like to ask for a motion to approve budget publication.
Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Very good, thank you, Paul. And Kelsey, thank you. Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding the fund balance policy update.
The City of Milton maintains fund balances in its general fund to ensure adequate cash flow, fiscal stability, and reserves for unforeseen circumstances. Maintaining an appropriate fund balance is a critical component of the city's financial health, supporting stable tax rates, emergency reserves, and city's credit worthiness. The city's of Milton's current debt policy was adopted in 2015. While the existing policy is comprehensive and aligns with General Accounting Standards Bureau standards, there are opportunities to update this terminology, remove redundancies, make it more readable for council staff in the community. Key updates to this fund balance policy is on the side, fund balance target minimum of 20% of the general fund annual revenues in addition to anticipated TID revenues. Fund balance classifications, definitions and examples provided by the five GASP-recognized classifications. Guidelines for use, emphasis on preserving a minimum fund balance and applying operational surpluses to meet policy targets. Implementation and monitoring, responsibility aside to the city administrator and treasurer with annual reporting of audit to the common council. Policy review is required at least once every three years. And for the fiscal impact, there's no direct cost for implementing this fund balance policy update. There are important fiscal considerations. These impacts include credit worthiness and lowering borrowing costs, financial stability and budget discipline. Staff recommends common council approve the updated fund balance policy as presented.
Questions? Or a motion?
I don't have any questions. I'll make the motion to approve the updated fund balance policy.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion at all? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding intersection traffic control at John Paul Road, Madison Avenue, State Highway 59, and ordinance 2025-569, amending sections 70-111 concerning through streets.
This is the ordinance that's been reviewed twice previously. The first and second reading are completed. We are still waiting for final approval from WISDOT. So at this time, we are recommending to table this until a future meeting.
I make a motion to table this ordinance change.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. 11, discussion and possible action regarding a final change order for the 2023 street and utility infrastructure project.
This is the final change order for the 2023 street and utility infrastructure project. When projects are completed, Baxter Rowan, the city engineer prepares a final change order which details out what the actual quantities were for the project after it was built. This change order provides for an increase of $148,833.08 on the project. The project expenses are funded by several accounts, sewer water, general fund capital. So it's not all funded by just one account. City administration recommends approving the final change order for the 2023 utility infrastructure project.
Any questions for Mark or motion?
I make a motion to approve the final change order for the 2023 street and utility infrastructure project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number 12, discussion and possible action regarding purchasing a large area mower.
Milton owns and operates two large area mowers currently. This purchase would replace one of those units. The purchase price is $125,438.02. This item was included in the recently adopted capital improvement plan amendment and general fund borrowing that was completed earlier this year. City administration recommends approving the purchase of the mower from Rinders.
I know that the, the old one's going to surplus in the next item, but what's the, is it just age use? Is it broken down? What's the reason?
The unit that we're proposing to replace was purchased as a, was a used unit when it was purchased. It's needing more maintenance and the mechanics have done a very good job of keeping it in operation. But there's, you know, they just, they don't last forever. So it's, it's time to replace it. It's been listed in the capital improvement plan for, actually back to the last revision back in 2021 as well. So we knew it was, was upcoming as a need. So that's kind of the, the reason for needing to just replace an old aging unit that's just not in service as well and performing as well as we need.
Perfect, thanks, Mark.
So I know the football, the youth football program talked about purchasing a large mower. This is completely different, correct? This is the city's mower and they're going to be purchasing their own for the proposed fields?
This would be the city's, I, yeah.
Just making sure that there's no other use.
There's no other funding involved, no other owner of this mower.
Understood, thank you.
I make a motion to approve purchasing a large area mower.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the mower? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number 13, discussion and possible action declaring items as surplus.
With the recent approval of the large area mower purchase, we're able to surplus, or request to surplus the older unit. In addition, we have a smaller, a smaller mower that we've recently replaced as well. And the council chamber chairs in the back of the room, we would like to surplus those as well. The council policy number five requires any, any item with an estimated value of over $2,000 to be declared surplus, so that's why these items are brought forward. So if there's no question, staff is requesting a motion to authorize the use of Wisconsin surplus for the listed items.
I'll make a motion to declare these items as surplus.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
I'll say, I've loved the chairs. I think they look amazing. Kind of pull some room together.
Sorry, that agenda, agenda items in the past. All right, general items. Committee reports. Somebody has a committee report to share with the group. Not everyone wants. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to staff reports then.
Paving of Morgan and Buton Street is taking
Paving of Morgan and Buton Street is taking place uh today or took place today and will be hopefully wrapping up tomorrow, there'll be some other minor work related to those two streets taking place over the next week or two to wrap that part of the project up. Vincent Street shouldering was installed, so that component is done. Arthur Drive, sewer and water utility installation is uh nearly complete, I think they've only got some service lines to install. Vernal Avenue is the big part of the work going on in the TID seven project right now, that involves the concrete sidewalk installation and curb and gutter replacement. Once that's done, the contractor will be paving first lane and Vernal Avenue and then moving to Merchant Row. Leaf collection will be starting here soon too, so if uh just put it out there to break the leaves out into the curb and we'll be picking them up uh with our with our leaf collection truck. And we're also uh doing brush collection this week too, I think that may have actually wrapped up today for the the month of October, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh I attended the League of Municipalities Annual Conference with uh three alders here. Um lots of good learning opportunities, uh have a couple of good ideas uh that we are bringing forward. Um so that was excellent, uh again, speaking with many developers uh about residential development within the city. Uh looking at some plans over for twenty-six, twenty-seven and possibly even twenty-eight, um so some future plans there. And um things are going quite well with the budget, obviously, it's from a recent presentation, it's uh done a lot of work, uh really appreciate the leadership team for their initiatives on this and their help, uh that's one of the reasons we don't have the unknowns, uh Ryan. So uh appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Jenny.
I have uh just a couple of things, first, I I did just attend uh two full days of election training uh specifically targeted towards clerks and deputy clerks and county clerks, so it was a really great opportunity uh to get some training and with being an off-season for elections, um it we were all able to attend, so that was great. Um then also with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference, I just want to let uh the council members know that our did attend, there are some pictures that the league shared, so if anybody's interested in those. I thought that was pretty exciting, uh representing Milton. Um but then uh also I kind of wanted to go over uh something and this is really minimal, but the chairs, the council chamber chairs. Um I would like to think the council for approving those and as we go through those, uh they look great, but uh there was a couple reasons too that they were brought up and one was for elections, the election officials are going to really enjoy it. Uh because one, they're a little bit lighter and two, the two little trolleys in the back, they can move them around and just we can hide them in the back instead of having them in other locations. Uh Department of Public Works has helped in the past of setting things up, we actually won't need them as much so that will save on a little bit of staff time, so again, thank you for that.
Are the chairs comfortable, folks? Nice work. Okay, well, I asked, so sorry, yep, Ashley, go ahead.
Um we had a very successful book crawl a couple Sundays ago in which participants went to various businesses on the east side of town um to read their current book and to enjoy what the businesses have to offer. I myself had a coffee, a glass of wine and a glass of beer, bought a book and I finished four chapters in my book, so it was super fun. We had great response from the participants and the businesses, um we plan on doing that again next year. Um this Saturday, we're working with the Ice Age Trail Alliance to host a history hike, um which will take participants from the library to Mount College, to the Milton House, to kind of learn history along the way. Um and then the Milton Youth Coalition hosted their fourth annual homecoming bonfire on Friday night. Um and welcomed over four hundred students for free food, music and fun. Um and then the coalition is partnering with the school district to host a for their trick-or-treat event on October twenty-sixth. So lots of good stuff happening, good events.
Cool, thank you, chief.
Uh pretty late from the PD side, um we are still accepting applications through um Friday evening for patrol officer. Our numbers are still down compared to previous years, but they are in line with other municipalities across areas as far as overall applicants. Um and the other thing on the agenda, um trunk or treat will be taking place at the high school on the twenty-sixth and we'll have staff on site to have a table with some goodies and we'll also be accepting medications and drug take back that evening as well. That's it.
Thank you. All right, so team building exercise, so tonight's question, and I told a few of you, what is your greatest time wasting activity? For new folks, it starts up here and you are included, the doors automatically lock, you can't leave.
Mine's TikTok. Just watching TikToks.
Computer games.
Mine's all social media.
This thing right here.
Instagram.
I don't have social media, so I guess uh, yeah, I know, isn't that weird, uh I'll go with woodworking.
I'm going to say puzzles, but really smaller, the smaller puzzles that I know I can do in a very short period of time and don't take a lot of uh brain power, but I do like them. Oh, and and the the door will remain open during council meeting.
I'll go uh Facebook Marketplace, I'm like a junker, I like looking like coin operated stuff, pinball machines, legal gambling machines. I also don't have social media, but I find plenty of other ways to waste time on my phone. Well, I guess this year would be watching Badger football. My kids like to watch Fail Army and I can never not watch it with them, that'd be it.
Okay, well, thank you, uh and thank you all, the first step to recovery is behind us, okay? Now we fix it. So our next meeting is October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.